Hey, let's go ahead and get started. We are glad that you guys are here. And this morning, we are finishing up our little three-part mini-series in Luke, which I'm kind of seeing as kind of an introduction into who Jesus is according to Luke, this idea of him being the Son. And so, we're finishing that up with Luke chapter four, verses one through thirteen, because there his sonship gets questioned by the devil. So, we are going to look at that scripture in a little bit greater depth today in Bible class. And we have one avenue, there's multiple avenues that you can go in this particular scripture. We go in one particular avenue during worship, but that is not the only way of which we can kind of make some applications. So, let's open with a word of prayer, and then we will dive in. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another day to be able to spend some time in your Word, to be gathered around together by your Spirit as brothers and sisters in Christ, learning your Word, learning how to study your Word, being nourished and strengthened by it. Lord, we pray indeed that your Spirit would lead us and guide us in this exploration and in this understanding, that we would be able to live our lives truly walking, walking with you and living the story. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. All right, so if you can open up your Bibles to Luke four, one through thirteen, and in your Luke books here, should be pages twelve to thirteen. And I think, did we lose our books that were sitting up there?
They're probably under the table.
Okay, under the table. So, if you need, yeah, there we are, and there's pages. If you do not have a book and need one, raise your hand, it will get you a book. If you have a book but forgot your book, then we have pages for you that you can fill out so you can follow along. So, just kind of raise your hand, and these wonderful helpers will be happy to bring it to you. Or you can walk up there and grab it yourselves. All right, so let's look, let's read through Luke four, one through thirteen. And as we're reading, maybe you just make a few little notes to yourself that says, "Ooh, hadn't heard that before." You know, it's always good, even when you're by yourself sometimes, to read scripture aloud, because sometimes you hear things when you're reading aloud that you might not read when you're just reading quietly in your own mind. Okay, so let's read this out loud, you can make some notes, and then we'll let you see what you find under Luke, all right? "And Jesus, full of the Holy Spirit, returned from the Jordan and was led by the Spirit in the wilderness for forty days, being tempted by the devil. And he ate nothing during those days, and when they were ended, he was hungry. The devil said to him, 'If you're the Son of God, command this stone to become bread.' And Jesus answered him, 'It is written, man shall not live by bread alone.' And the devil took him up and showed him all the kingdoms of the world in a moment of time, and said to him, 'To you I will give all this authority and their glory, for it has been delivered to me, and I give it to whom I will. If you then will worship me, it will all be yours.' And Jesus answered him, 'It is written, you shall worship the Lord your God, and him only shall you serve.' And he took him to Jerusalem and set him on the pinnacle of the temple, and said to him, 'If you are the Son of God, throw yourself down from here, for it is written, he will command his angels concerning you to guard you, and on their hands they will bear you up, lest you strike your foot against a stone.' And Jesus answered him, 'It is said, you shall not put the Lord your God to the test. And when the devil had ended every temptation, he departed from him until an opportune time.'" All right, so let's get writing, what you guys find. What things do you see in Luke chapter four? What are some of the, there's some questions of who, when, where, and what, so those can both guide you. What things do you guys initially see? And I might ask you a few more questions to help you find a couple more things. So what things do you guys initially see?
I have to tell that because it's kind of a thrill, because Mr. Passover reminded me. I've taken that making sourdough bread is kind of a hobby, so I'm learning how to turn flour and water into stones.
The other way around, that's good. Who are the characters involved in this story? Maybe I'll ask that question, let's start with that. Who? Jesus? Jesus? Okay, the devil? And the Holy Spirit. Our first service folks have a little advantage on that one, okay? And the Holy Spirit. It's kind of almost the hidden character in the story. Because a lot of times, we don't, we think about Jesus against the devil, but right at the beginning, what does it say? He was led by the Holy Spirit, and he was full of the Holy Spirit. That means the Holy Spirit was there. Jesus was not alone, okay? The word devil here, if I put it in kind of, this is the Greek for it, but in English letters, diabolos is the word there. Matthew uses a different one, he uses the word that's with accuser, which is kind of the word of Satan, okay? But here the word is devil, diabolos. From that word, we get diabolical, so you understand what that word means, okay? So, those are the who, that's what's going on, okay? The where, where is it taking place? Okay, we're gonna call it the wilderness, and we're really gonna call it the Judean wilderness. Okay? And there's a significance, okay, in understanding it as the wilderness, because there are, from Isaiah, from Isaiah you get the whole idea out of the wilderness, okay? A voice crying in the wilderness, "Make straight the way for the Lord; every valley shall be..." Okay, exalted in every... Okay, "and the rough places will be made smooth," okay? That's the wilderness. And for those of you coming to second service, you'll see a picture of the Judean wilderness. I apologize, I don't have it up now. But if you just, you have your phone with you, just Google Judean wilderness, and you'll see that that's probably different than what we typically think of in terms of a desert, which is kind of dry, flat, and the like. Wilderness is a very, very unique place, okay? And that's where this is taking place. If you were to go into the rift valley, that is where the Jordan River goes from Galilee down to the Dead Sea, okay? You have the Judean wilderness, and then it just drops off into that valley. It's actually, I think, seven hundred, the Dead Sea is 700 feet below sea level. It's the lowest spot on earth, it's really far down there. And if you were in Jericho, they have what they say, what has been referred to as the Mount Temptation, and the idea that that's the mountain that Jesus went. It doesn't necessarily say a single mountain, but it's in that whole wilderness. But the reason why that comes from Jericho is because just beyond Jericho is the Jordan River, and it's in that area where Jesus was baptized, okay? So, you kind of have, remember my great drawing of Israel before? Guys are gonna love this one, okay? So we have the Sea of Galilee, the Jordan River, the Dead Sea. And so, about here is where Jesus would have been baptized. Jericho sits over here. Okay, this is Bethany beyond the Jordan. And then, right here, just think like a massive wall of hills and wilderness and everything else, and it just drops down, okay? And it actually extends all the way down along the Dead Sea. Masada, have you ever heard of Masada? Okay, so it's that kind of area. So, this is where this story is taking place, is in this area, okay? When, when did this take place? Very significant. After Jesus was baptized, okay? And in Luke's account, when else does it take place? Think back to last week. After his baptism, and Luke puts it after his genealogy, okay? After his genealogy. And so, in terms of a timeline, after Jesus' baptism. But in the book, in Luke, after the genealogy. I think I just misspelled genealogy, it was something like that, okay? I think that's an extra. So, that's significant, because what was the whole tenor of the genealogy? Jesus, the Son of, going all the way down to the Son of God. And you go from there immediately into a story about temptation, where Satan is questioning if you are the Son of God. So, kind of a significant element about where it's located, but it's after Jesus' baptism, okay? And what is taking place? What's taking place? Temptations. How long was Jesus tempted in the wilderness? The whole forty days, okay? A lot of people think that it was just a few temptations after going on a long fast. The word, if you look in verse two, it says, "He's in the wilderness for forty days, being tempted by the devil." In the Greek language, that being tempted is a, we call a present participle. That means it's an ongoing action. So the whole time, he was being tempted. And at the end of forty days, when it's looking really bad, and Jesus is at his worst physically, then Satan comes up with these three real zingers, right? Okay, so we hear three temptations, but it's being tempted for forty days, all right? Let's look at what else we can see in there. First temptation, what is the first temptation? Turn the stone into bread, okay? Let's kind of put these over here. So one, stone to bread, not what John said, where bread into stone, but... Okay. What's the second temptation? All the kingdoms of the world. Okay, kingdoms for worship. Okay? And what's the third one? Okay. It's testing God, right. Falling from the temple. And the pinnacle of the temple, many believe to be at the southwest corner of the temple, is where that would have been located, and there would have been, that would have been the highest point. And that's where he would have told them to go jump off. Somebody tells you to jump off the pinnacle of the temple, and everybody else doesn't. Are you gonna do it? All right, so three temptations, okay? Now, obviously, and we'll talk about this under, when we talk about understand, there's more to those than just those three things. But we'll touch base on that in just a bit, okay? Anything else you see in the what? Okay, what's taking place? What are some other details of the story that might seem to be important? Does devil even respond with scripture? That's really good, okay? The devil responded with scripture. So does that mean that everything we hear from scripture, okay, is automatically, this dangerous thing I'm saying, pay attention to what I'm saying carefully, okay? Everything that gets, where scripture is used is something we should just, well, that's what the Bible says. Is that how we should use the Bible? What's that? We should test it, and what do we test the scriptures against? Other scriptures, yes, great answer. Exactly. Okay, Satan used the scriptures, but that isn't what the point of the scripture was about, okay? And there are people who do that now. How many of us hear people in the news that start taking scripture and start saying, "Well, if you're gonna say that there's a sanctity of life, well, then that means you shouldn't be eating shellfish either." Have you guys heard those kind of things? Okay? What's that? Yeah, well, what they do is they take, they take portions of scripture that are given to specific people in specific settings with certain meanings, and they take them to be all kinds of things, or they take it out of context. I mean, if we honestly, if we were to go to Ecclesiastes, I could point you in the Ecclesiastes, I think it's chapter ten, where basically it says money is the answer to everything. How many of you believe that? Okay, so that's what Satan would do, isn't it? Take something out of context and say, "You guys are looking it up right now, right?" It's in there, okay? Where we take the scripture and we say, "It says this," when that's not really what it says, okay?
It has to go other than Ecclesiastes.
Yeah, exactly. But if you want to take a certain... And that's exactly what Satan did there. And so, that's a, boy, that's a big temptation for us, okay? I have, I have, I haven't done it in a long time, they don't come to my house anymore. But I've had some conversations with Mormons before and Jehovah's Witnesses. And honestly, they will use the Bible, okay? But they're not getting the whole narrative of the Bible. So they're picking certain parts, and they're missing the overall story of the Bible. So, good observation, now what's next? Good, what else?
I have a question. In verse six, chapter about the kingdom, and the devil said to Jesus, "To you I will give all this authority and the glory, for it has been delivered to me." Is the devil inclined to Genesis and have a meaning in the outcome?
So, well, and I have to go back to some of my other scriptures. Some of you probably are on top of this already. The reality is, is that Satan is referred to as the prince of this world, okay? And so, he has been, he was thrown out of heaven, and he was given this domain to be his ground. And so, there is a sense, yes, that he is the prince of this world, and all these things are his, but they're not his apart from God authorizing that, if you will, okay? This gets into some of the hiddenness of God about why he would allow him to have that and do that. But in a certain sense, okay, the world in its sinful state, in its brokenness and its sinful state is Satan's playground, it kind of owns it. Now, you raise a really good question. So when he talks about all the kingdoms and all their glory and all the authority has been delivered to me, "I give it to whom I will," he says that, now is that part true? Does Satan give the kingdoms to whom he will? Who does that? God does that. Now, does, this is once again, hiddenness of God, where, does God use Satan to accomplish his will, his purposes? He does, it's really kind of scary to think about it, but he does. You look at the story of Job, okay? Even look at the story of Jesus' crucifixion. And Satan is clearly involved in all of that, but yet, it was what God was wanting to take place to save the world. So Satan becomes an unwitting accomplice to God's greater purposes, which it's like he can't help himself, because the last thing he'd want to do is help God with his accomplishing his purposes. But he's so against God, and therefore against us, that he can't help himself, and then God does that. Nebuchadnezzar. Nebuchadnezzar was not a man of God, you know, the king of Babylon, and yet God used him to accomplish his purpose against his people. So, so this is kind of those kind of yes and no. And Satan is taking advantage of that to try to trick, entice Jesus into something that really is not accurate. So, it's really a good question. Does that, did I explain that, or does that make sense to you guys? I mean, the video's going, so this is gonna go... Please ask for a supervisor if I say something wrong.
You haven't changed any technique regarding...
Same thing, yeah. So, yes, this is kind of his place, but no, it's not. It's kind of both at the same time in a way, okay? All right, good, good, good find. Anything else, other things?
So, just in my own curiosity, I Googled, "Can you really fast for forty days?"
Yeah.
And there was some guy that posted his story about doing that. I didn't read it, but he had a photo before and after. And what struck me in his after photo was, wow, here's a guy you don't want to mess with. He really has a lot of willpower and a lot of strength. And so, I know it's a human thing, but I guess maybe it just put me in touch a little bit with Jesus in that.
Wow, that's good, good observation. Yeah, and there's, and there's, there is water, just so you guys know, there is a wadi. It's called the Wadi Kelt. That goes, is essentially a spring out of Jerusalem, and it runs all the way through that wilderness area and goes down toward the Jordan River. So, there is water in that wilderness, it flows all your life, it goes through there. Herod used that same wadi and that water to create his gardens in Jericho, so, because otherwise, there would be no water in Jericho. I mean, you'd have to come uphill from the Jordan River, which would not be so easy. So, there is actually a flow of water that comes down there. Tony, you had a question there.
That was my question. No water for forty days either?
There is, there is, it's called the Wadi Kelt. Wadi, W-A-D-I, and kelt is, I think, Q-U, Q, I think, it's like, it's almost like kilt, as I think is the word for it, I'd have to go back and check on the spelling for it, but it's called the Wadi Kelt that runs here. So yes, water, good. Yeah, Tony?
Moses and Elijah also had the forty days, and so Jesus also had the forty days.
Good, okay. So, forty, you're picking up on the number forty, very significant, okay? And you said Moses, Moses and the people of Israel for... Forty years. And where were they for forty years? In the wilderness, ah, good, okay. So you guys are picking up a connection there. So Jesus is in, Jesus is forty days, okay, in the wilderness, kind of reflective of the children of Israel for forty years in the wilderness. And were they tempted in the wilderness? A whole lot. How did they do in those temptations? Not very good, okay? And if you go back just a teeny bit farther, remember in that genealogy, before it said Jesus, the Son of God, it was the Son of Adam. How did Adam do on all those temptations? Okay, and how many, and how many ways was Adam tempted? One, but there's... What's, what's that?
There are a few different parts to that.
Yes, let's look at that real quick. Let's look at Genesis chapter three. Keep your hand marked in Luke, so you can kind of make some comparisons. All right. There's kind of one primary element of the temptation, but there's a lot of conversation and dialogue that goes on with it, okay? And let's look at, starting at verse one. He says to the woman, "Did God actually say, 'You shall not eat of any fruit in the tree of the garden?'" Are you really beholden to God? Do you really have to do that? "And the woman said to the serpent, 'We may eat of the fruit of the trees in the garden, but God said, 'You shall not eat of the fruit of the tree that is in the midst of the garden; neither shall you touch it, lest you die.'" Did God say that? Ah, a little something added, okay? "But the serpent said to the woman, 'Ah!' Don't listen to that, you're not gonna die. God knows that when you eat of it, your eyes will be opened, and you will be like God." In other words, who you are is not enough. You need to be more. Deuteronomy, okay? Tell me more, what else can we find out? Okay, Psalm ninety-one is what Satan uses, is what the devil uses. What Jesus uses is all from Deuteronomy. What chapters? You see what chapters? Eight and six. Why is that significant? Why do you think that's significant? So, the Shema, "Here O Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one," okay? "You shall not test." Open up, go back to Deuteronomy, just real quickly. And so, this requires just a small bit of chronology, a little timeline of what's going on. When is Deuteronomy written? When is, when is the setting, what is the setting for the book of Deuteronomy? Does anybody know that? Tony?
At the end of the fourth year, and they're getting ready to cross the Jordan.
Yes.
Change in leadership from Moses to Joshua.
Outstanding, Tony is right on. So, Deuteronomy is written, the setting for Deuteronomy is all these instructions and encouragements, a restating of the Sinai Covenant, the Ten Commandments, is Deuteronomy chapter five. Everything in Deuteronomy is all geared toward them crossing into the Promised Land. They are sitting out toward Moab. They've, if you read through the book of Numbers, which comes before, they have, they've messed up, they have, they didn't pay attention to the ones who went into Cana. They've spent thirty-eight years in the wilderness of Zin, just on the other side of the hills from the Promised Land. They are so close, yet so far. And then God doesn't allow them to go the short distance just back over those hills. They have to go all the way around through Edom and Moab on the east side of the Dead Sea. So they have to kind of go all the way over here, all right? And now he's speaking to them. So the fact that Jesus uses words from Deuteronomy, what do you think he's trying to say to them? What is the message with him using words from Deuteronomy? He could have used words from Exodus before they had gotten there. What is the message?
Is he fulfilling on what God asked?
He's fulfilling what they were not able to do. The words are given to them after they have already failed doing those things of worshiping the Lord your God and serving him only. He's telling them again to do this, they had already failed that. They had already grumbled about bread and quail and water and their appetites. They had already done that for many years. They had already done that for many years. Okay? And they were a people who kept almost this longing of, "Well, if you're, if we're really your people, then why are you gonna leave us out here to die? If we're really your people, aren't you gonna do this?" They kept putting God to the test. Okay? In fact, Moses did that too, and that's why he didn't make it into the Promised Land. Kind of connected to that. Not exactly, but it's in that same realm. Okay? And so, you get all these things. And so, Jesus uses the words after their failures, and it kind of shows that Jesus has now accomplished what Israel did not. So, when we look at a word called typology, when we look at Jesus coming into this world, Jesus was the, was the perfect Adam that Adam was not. Jesus was also the perfect Israel, the son of God, okay, that Israel was not. And we see all that taking place in this wilderness that took, that was there. Okay? That's actually one of the real deep theological meanings of this particular story. So, good, I'm glad you picked up on the words Jesus used and where they come from is actually important too.
Well, back then, the scrolls and all that written word was very important to these people. Jesus three times says to the devil, "It is written, it's not hearsay."
Correct. Great observation. Everybody hear that one? "It is written." This is not just supposed, okay, but it is written. That is, that's very, very significant. Okay? Anything else? I think that's a pretty good, pretty good rundown. You guys did a great job exploring the Scripture today. And I bet you there's more in there if you start looking. We could, we could spend another hour, honestly, going through all the Scriptures that connect to it from Deuteronomy and the misuse of Psalm ninety-one by, by the devil that's there. We could look into all those things, but you guys got a really good picture of that. Okay? And we talked about some of the meaning, okay? The understanding about what's taking place here, how Jesus is fulfilling, what others could not do, did not do. Okay? And, and when he did that, it's really important, a couple things, okay? Number one, Jesus is a model for us, but he is not just a model for us. Okay? So, he shows us how to withstand temptation. But what is really significant is that he did withstand temptation. And he is the perfect son of God who came into this world and because he withstood the temptation, because he was tempted in every way as we are, yet was without sin, that meant he could be the perfect sacrifice for us on the cross and paying the penalty for us. And give to us what he won in that wilderness, which is his righteousness. Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse twenty-one. "God made him who had no sin to be sin for us." How do we have, know he had no sin? Stories like this show us that he had no sin, because honestly, with these temptations, guilty as charged, right? But he had no sin. He made him to be sin for us so that in him we might be the righteousness of God. So, we get credit for everything that Jesus did. That's what Paul writes in Romans. Okay? All right. So, that's our look and that's our understand. Any questions about those two elements? Yeah, right. Mark, Matthew does that? Mark actually gives very brief, he just gives, Mark gives a sentence after being tempted, then he goes right into the ministry. Matthew is the one, yeah, the angels administered to him. Sure. Well, and, and maybe you can add... Well... Yeah, I'm gonna go something stronger than the angels. Okay? And, and maybe you can write this down in your understanding. All right? Yeah, the Holy Spirit. I like angels. Angels are ministering spirits sent by God for those who are receiving salvation. Praise God for angels. But this is God himself. And, and obviously, Jesus was the son of God, but in his humiliation and in his human weakness, he relied on the Holy Spirit. And so, we have the same Holy Spirit. Say it every time we have a baptism. What do we say? "Repent and be baptized, every one of you, in the name of Jesus Christ for the forgiveness of sins, and you will receive the gift of the Holy Spirit." So, we have the same spirit. And this is probably the most significant thing for us to remember when we are battling temptations. We don't battle them alone. We have the same spirit that was with Jesus in the wilderness is with us in the wilderness too. So, yeah, I like where you're thinking with the angels, and that's good, but to me, this is even like one Holy Spirit trumps legion of angels. That's what I understand, so. And we have that. Good. Anybody else? Any other questions? All right. So, let's go to page thirteen in your book. And for today, just to kind of start going through this process, last time I kind of walked it through you briefly. This time, what I'd like you guys to do is do this at your tables, okay? Whoever's at your table with you, all right? And I'd like you to go and kind of work through those questions under Kindle and Extend. Okay? Those two kind of go together. Kindle is maybe more personal. What, how is the Holy Spirit fanning into flame in me, what God is doing? But then extending is how do I, how do I speak this story to others and how do I live this story in the presence of others? Okay? So, take some time at your table. I'm gonna give you guys about ten minutes, okay? And see how many of those questions, or maybe at least do one from each section, all right? And then we're gonna take five minutes just to kind of debrief and to see where that's going for you, okay? So, I'm gonna turn it over to you. And that is, the last temptation is that Jesus responds, "Do not put the Lord your God to the test." So, when Jesus is saying that to the devil, is he talking about what the devil is doing to Jesus right at that moment? Put the Lord your God to the test? Or is he talking about testing God to pick up Jesus from falling off the pinnacle?
Jesus himself.
Which, which, what's that? Jesus? Yes. Who said yes? Yeah, they're learning. They're learning, yes.
But it's confusing because sometimes we talk of God, Jesus, the Holy Spirit as three separate, it's just something with one.
Yes. Three distinct persons. I think Satan is, I think when Jesus is saying that, I think in, in one level, he's actually saying, "You're testing God. What are you doing?" But I think we have to also remember that Jesus is in the place of Adam and in the place of Israel. So, he's coming to this as a man, as the son of man, even though he's saying, "If you are the son of God." And he's saying, "Don't put God to the test." Okay? Because really, the whole point is, if you are the son of God, then this is what God will do for you. Okay? Do you see what I'm saying? So, I think it's, I think it's a both and. I think it's very much a both and. He's testing Jesus, but he's also testing the Father in a way, putting the Lord your God to the test. The other thought is really a good one by Janice. Janice, share your thought. No, it's really good. It's really good.
Well, Satan's always trying to get us and other people to not believe in, in God. And in the Bible, he really contradicts himself here with this when he says that we have authority, has to be given to me. Well, he's admitting right there that there is a God.
He's good.
Yeah, even, even the demons know that there is a God.
That's right. Exactly right. And Satan recognizes that.
But he doesn't want anybody else to know that he does that.
You know, and, and it would have been easy for Jesus just to say, "Well, if it's been given to you, then why don't I just go with the one who gave it to you in the first place?" But he doesn't say that. Okay? Goes back to the Deuteronomy and what the temptations were back then, of ambition and the like, and he's going right back to the word of God to make a suit. But your point is a hundred percent right on.
Well, it's so for us, you know, because if he were to use his God regard, what power would we have?
That's right.
You know, if he was good as a man.
That's right. So, the things that he did and the things that he relied on are the same things that we do and we rely on. That's the model part of it. Exactly. Yep, good. All righty. So, I've got, get going. So, I hope you guys had some good conversation. Did anybody come up with someone on the Extend, identify someone that this is, this would be a good story for me to kind of share in my own words in my own way? Did I come up with some of those? Outstanding. That's the goal. That's what we're looking for. And, and for your own piddling as well.